Good evening, everybody, and Happy New Year. Welcome to the Monday, January 14th, Meeting of the Village Board of Trustees. And I would now ask everyone, please rise for the pledge.
............................................................... Will the Deputy Clerk, please, call the office?
Trustee Giordano.
Present.
Trustee Quigley.
Present.
Trustee Luizzi.
Present.
Trustee Haye.
Present.
Mayor Erickson.
Present. Before we get started tonight, I'd like to take just a few moments to recognize former Tuckahoe Police Chief Jerry Mignon. Jerry passed away about two weeks ago. So at this time, I would just ask if we would all stand just for a moment of silence in his honor. I know Jerry was very special to our own Chief John Costanzas, so I'm going to ask John if he could come on up and talk a little bit about Jerry.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Chief Mignon served the village of Tuckahoe for 37 years. He was first appointed in 1966 as a police officer, and this was following his service through our country with the United States Army. In 1972, he was appointed Detective Youth Officer, and literally was one of the first youth officers with that designation in not only Westchester County but in New York State. It was a new program funded by a state grant to bring young people and police officers together. And the programs that then Detective Mignon put into place were truly models way before his time as far as community outreach and community policing. As a young person, I grew up in this village. I had the good fortune of participating in some of the programs that he put together. And I remember as a young kid, every summer, he would get busloads of village residents, young people, onto a bus with off-duty police officers and members of the community and bring us up to Crown Point Park. And just a day of, you know, fun, seeing police officers in a different light. So when you get back to the village, you look at them as human beings and, you know, not as people so detached from you as a young person. And several programs like that. And truly, this was all in the early 1970s, and very few police departments were doing these kinds of things. And here we are, you know, in 2013, and these are still model programs and programs that our police department still tries to live up to and police departments throughout the area. So he truly was at the cutting edge and always had the interest of young people in mind. I remember a story, several years ago, the Journal News wrote a story about him and a young person who was having some difficulty in getting into drug use. And Jerry, again, diverted him from the criminal justice system, got involved with his family, with him personally, and the person went on to graduate from Harvard University. So, I mean, this is the legacy of him as a youth officer way ahead of his time. He went on to become a Detective Sergeant and then Detective Lieutenant with the police department, working on so many major cases. I was looking through his file last week, and accolades for solving bank robberies, burglaries, other armed robberies. And one case in particular was an abduction of a young person here in the village. And it happened in 1980, I believe. And for two and a half, three years, then Detective Sergeant Mignon and his partner, Detective Bellis, worked endlessly. And after about three years of investigation, arrested this perpetrator and brought him to justice, and it was a successful prosecution. And that case, still, when they talk about sex crimes in Westchester County, that case is still a model case of prowess in investigation. And Jerry and his partner were so instrumental in bringing that person to justice. 1993, he was promoted to Chief. It was a very important time for the village police department. It was in the beginning of the technological era, I guess you would say, and he brought computerization and technology to the village using grant monies and forfeiture money, tens of thousands of dollars in installing computers and technological upgrades, putting laptops into police cars, bringing us into the digital age. We're all under his leadership. He got heavily involved with the Chiefs Association, became President of the Chiefs Association in 2001. And we know of the events of 2001 and all the issues at the time, all the challenges of terrorism and new things like anthrax and all of those things. It was under Jerry's leadership with the Westchester County Chiefs that, again, new policies, new procedures were put into place. He championed the victims of domestic violence. He was on a domestic violence council, a very new program in Westchester County. It was made up of judges and prosecutors and a couple of chiefs of police in Westchester. And they wrote policies and procedures that truly were the models for not only every police department in Westchester but throughout New York State. So he has left a long legacy, his leadership in developing personnel. He took an interest in every single member, whether it was the newly-appointed rookie or the most seasoned veteran on his way out the door. He took an interest in their personal life. He took an interest in their professional development and particularly their safety. This past Tuesday, we had his funeral, and it was attended by dozens of police officers throughout Westchester County, dozens of police chiefs and commissioners, both active and retired. If any of, and I know several of you went to his wake, it literally was attended by thousands of people. It was two days of nonstop people through the door. And he touched so many lives in this village, in this county, and really in the state. His motorcade consisted of about 30 motorcycles from all over Westchester, Rockland, and as far as Orange County, people came and participated in his motorcade. It was a beautiful ceremony at the church, beautiful funeral, and it was a proper send-off for a person that was most deserving. His legacy here is that he pointed this department in the right direction, and 50 years from now, we will still be following his lead. You know, there's an Italian proverb that says, "The right man comes at the right time." Chief Mignon was the right person at the right time. He was a true leader, well-respected throughout the community, throughout law enforcement. He was truly loved, and he's going to be greatly missed.
Thank you, Chief. He really did leave an impact on the village. And I'm going to make a suggestion tonight, and I hope my colleagues would agree with me, that we have a police youth bureau that we're opening up here. And I'm going to suggest that we actually dedicate that room to Jerry Mignon, if you're comfortable with that.
Absolutely. That was his love. You know, he advocated and he championed the causes of the most defenseless in our community, it was the young people, and steering people in the right direction. That's a beautiful tribute to him.
So I'll certainly, if my colleagues here are comfortable with that, I'll work with you, and we'll get a fitting memorial and signage for that room.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have one presentation tonight, and I'm going to ask Sandy Reyes-Ger if she would come on up and introduce our speaker. And we're going to have a PowerPoint presentation. This is from the individuals from SWAC. So Sandy, I'll pass it over to you.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and trustees of the board. Thank you for accommodating us on tonight's agenda. My name is Sandra Reyes-Ger, and I'm here tonight with DeMarco, Department of Public Works. Over the past several months, Frank, myself, and other members of the Environmental Committee have been participating in several SWAC, which stands for Southern Westchester Energy Action Sustainability Forum, held at Pearl Lawrence earlier this year. I'm following Charles Trinkmaney as the village representative to participate in the SWAC meetings. On behalf of the Environmental Committee, we have invited and to introduce Nina Orville, Executive Director of SWAC, who is here to give a brief presentation and a description of the SWAC Consortium and the Climate Smart Community Resolution. Following tonight's presentation, she will be meeting with our Environmental Committee to discuss the initiative touched on at this meeting in more detail, and the Environmental Committee will then advance these recommendations to the board. Without further ado, I'd like to introduce Nina Orville, Executive Director of SWAC.
Good evening. Thank you very much for that lovely welcome, and thank you so much for providing time on your agenda this evening. Sorry about that. One moment while we get this recording. Okay, perfect. So as you heard, my name is Nina Orville with the Southern Westchester Energy Action Consortium. And I'm going to share a little bit of information with you regarding SWAC and how we're structured and got started, and then a very brief amount of information about a few initiatives that we're working on currently. So our goal is to help municipalities accelerate their progress on sustainability issues. And we do that by identifying cost-effective measures related to issues including energy, transportation, and waste. We have at least a couple of different strategies that we use. One is to identify and to share successful initiatives that have been developed already by a participating municipality in SWAC. Examples of that could be the vegetable oil-fueled sanitation truck, thanks to Frank DeMarco, or installation of LED streetlights, leaf mulching practices developed by the village of Irvington. There are a host of different examples. Another approach that we take is if we identify a common need among municipalities and no one has yet figured out how to tackle it effectively within their own municipality, then we might set out to find a solution that works for everybody. So we got started in 2010, and initially, it was just outreach to environmental committees in a number of municipalities in Southern Westchester. And Peter McCarty, who is the Chair of East Chester's Environmental Committee and the Chair of our Advisory Board, was the person who originally reached out to the village of Tuckahoe and suggested that the Environmental Committee participate in SWAC activities. We have some funding from Westchester Community Foundation, and Greenberg Nature Center is our fiscal agent. We are currently an informal initiative, but we have an organizational development process that's underway, and we plan to come to you and other participating municipalities and ask you to adopt a resolution simply indicating that you're participating in SWAC, which will help us to tighten communication with municipalities and also help us to access funding, additional funding, to be more effective in the work that we're undertaking. You can see the municipalities in green on the map are municipalities participating in SWAC from Yonkers up through White Plains. And you'll also note the municipalities in yellow at the top of the county are municipalities participating in the Northern Westchester Energy Action Consortium, which got started prior to SWAC. So the first topic is energy tracking. One of the things that we found is that for all municipalities, identifying ways to improve energy efficiency and maybe to install some renewable energy, those are all, that is of high priority to everybody. Yet, none of the municipalities, even the largest ones, had figured out how to track their energy consumption and how to easily begin to identify where the best opportunities might be to make improvements. In cases where municipalities were tracking it all, often it was Excel spreadsheets, very labor-intensive, time-intensive, and difficult to really extract the most valuable information. And the old adage is true, that you can't manage what you don't measure. So I started doing research on various products that were out there. There were a few things that I was looking for, that the software would help perhaps reviewing energy bills. I know from my experience working on these kinds of projects, there can be a lot of errors in rate codes and a host of other things that are costing municipalities money, in benchmarking facilities to understand which are most and which are least efficient, in greenhouse gas emissions reporting, which is important to some municipalities to understand the greenhouse gas emissions associated with their energy use. We were looking for something that was low-cost, that's easy to use, that can be part of the regular municipal workflow, that doesn't require a consultant to come in and a whole complicated project. Software that provides information that's weather-normalized, so that if you have a very cold winter and then you have a mild winter, you're still able to compare the relative performance of your buildings, because weather is sort of taken out of the equation through a certain kind of analysis. And also to help municipalities track energy improvement projects that they might undertake, because often when a municipality decides to do a project that is supposed to result in reduced energy consumption, for instance, it's really hard to verify whether you're getting the results you were told you would get before you start. So you might decide to do it because there's a certain financial return that you're expecting. You're expecting the project to pay for itself in five years, but if you're not tracking how you're actually doing, you don't know whether that's what you're getting or not. So I did some analysis, and I came up with a product that really hits all of those different points. And I piloted it in Dobbs Ferry, where I'm from. It's installed in Greenberg. The village of Irvington just signed a contract, and other municipalities are looking at it, too. So I'm just going to show you a few screenshots, and this is something that I'll be discussing in more detail with the Environmental Committee, and if they agree that it's valuable for the village, you'll get the full recommendation from them. But you can look at things like energy use intensity over time for all the municipal operations. Are you using, is your energy consumption going up or down? Oops, excuse me. This is a slide that shows the benchmarking capability. Each of those is a different facility, and it might show how much energy is being used per square foot, and then how much on an absolute basis. There's lots of different benchmarking that you can do. Everything can be exported into Excel or PowerPoint for further analysis or presentations. This is a shot. These are the energy projects that we've done in Dobbs Ferry, so you can enter relatively detailed information about each project that you've done, the cost, the expected energy savings, expected cost savings, et cetera. This is a particular meter. This is Dobbs Ferry's streetlights, where we're installing LED streetlights, something that the head of Public Works got going. And you can see the blue line at the bottom is the usage for this part of this fiscal year, and it's really coming down as a result of the energy-efficient streetlights. This is the greenhouse gas emissions reporting. You can generate this information for a particular facility, for all the municipal operations. So that's one example of a need that municipalities had. They hadn't necessarily fully articulated it, but you could tell that it was a challenge. And for instance, there are a lot of grants that have become available over the last several years for energy-related projects. To be effective in pursuing those grants, it really helps to be able to easily document your current consumption, what you think will happen with consumption after the project is installed. So if you're using this kind of software, it makes it really easy to pursue the money when those grant opportunities come up. The next initiative that I'm going to talk about very briefly is something called Complete Streets. And the definition of complete streets is the design of streets in a way that considers the needs of all users. So that means drivers, pedestrians, people who use transit, bicyclists, et cetera. And in 2012, a state law was passed unanimously, which I think probably doesn't happen that often, the New York State Complete Streets Law, which requires that this kind of consideration is provided when street projects are undertaken that use state funding, state or federal funding. And it is strongly recommended that that state law be mirrored at the local level, so that local municipalities, if they're spending money on their streets already, if they have a project planned, as part of the design of that project, they think about whether there's a way to make the streets more comfortable for pedestrians to use, bicyclists, et cetera. It doesn't mandate that anything be done, but it requires that there's some thought given to the impact of a roadway project and to whether there's a way to make the project, make the streets more comfortable for everyone. So SWAC, in order to support the municipal adoption of complete street policies, created, and this was under Peter McCarty's leadership with the Transportation Committee of SWAC, a Complete Streets in a Box Toolkit, which is found on the SWAC website. And that includes model resolution, includes the information that a municipality might need to understand the background of complete streets, videos, a host of different things. And in Westchester, Lewisboro and Dobbs Ferry have passed municipal resolutions, and there are a number of other municipalities that are in the process of considering that. And that's something that we really recommend municipalities consider doing. The next project is, it's not really a project, but an initiative, the Climate Smart Communities Program. So this is an inter-agency program of New York State. You can see NYSERDA, Department of Environmental Conservation, Department of Transportation, Department of Health, Department of State, Public Services Commission are all a part of this initiative, which is designed to support New York State's goal to reduce greenhouse gas emissions 80% by 2050. So the Climate Smart Communities Program was created as a way to help municipalities understand what steps might be helpful to take in order to enhance their sustainability. Local governments become climate smart communities by taking a pledge, which essentially means adopting a municipal resolution indicating that you're adopting the pledge. And at the moment, 110 local governments in New York State have done so, and by far the highest concentration of municipalities that have done that are here in Westchester. The program is free. One thing that is important to know is the state is beginning to allocate more and more resources to this program. They're seeing it as an important way to encourage municipalities to take steps that they think are important related to sustainability. I'm on a couple of committees that are involved in looking at further evolving this program. And this is something that SWAC recommends, that municipalities that haven't adopted this pledge, that they do so. It gives a helpful framework for environmental committees and for municipalities who are working on these issues to think about what some of the different areas that they might want to address are, and there will be more and more resources channeled into this program to support municipalities that adopt the pledge. The last initiative is the Mid-Hudson Regional Sustainability Plan, which is a seven-county sustainability planning effort, which is concluding now. The plan is going to be finalized next month. It was funded with about $1 million from NYSERDA. An environmental consulting firm was hired, and lots of volunteers and people from the counties involved and a host of other organizations have been working on this plan over the last year. SWAC is a member of the governing consortium of the sustainability planning effort. And one thing that's important to know is that when the plan is complete, the next phase of this overall effort is implementation funding. So the state has allocated $90 million to be dispersed over three years for projects that help advance the goals of these regional plans. There are 10 regions of New York State that undertook this planning process, and the funds will be somehow allocated throughout the state to support those kinds of projects. So that's a useful thing to be aware of, that there'll be more opportunities to apply for grant funding. And that's it. So that's a little bit of information about some of the initiatives that we're working on that might give you a sense of the breadth of the topics that we're addressing.
Well, thank you. I know that, you know, we have a very active environmental committee, as you're well aware of.
Yes.
And I know Jeanette participates in most of their meetings, and Frank as well, too. So they're going to, I guess, process this, digest this, and then, as Sandy said, give a recommendation to us as to what they feel is most appropriate for our village. But thank you very much for putting this together for us.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yes, actually, Nina, just who, within the villages, cities, municipalities you've been working with implementing these plans, who's the inside people? Who sort of makes sure this doesn't just collect dust in a corner that actually somebody implements it? Considering that most boards like ours are very, very part-time, how does this get implemented?
You're talking about the Regional Sustainability Plan?
Any of the plans. How do, you know, if we're going to adopt a climate smart or a street smart, how do we make sure that when we're going to do a project, that there's somebody within the government saying, "Oh, by the way, you better look into making sure that you cover these bases"? Who does that?
That is such a good, important question. It truly is. And so with the targeted kinds of initiatives that we work on, we only pursue them as SWAC if we're confident that there's real demand and interest on the part of the municipalities. In other words, if we feel confident that we're solving a problem that the municipalities have already identified, so that if we're able to offer a solution, that there are people in the municipalities ready to take that in and use it. In the case of Climate Smart Communities, for example, that is, initially, when it was developed a few years ago, it was really just a sketch of some of the things that municipalities should consider. So in Dobbs Ferry, for example, I recommended that we adopt it, just because it laid out very neatly and kept us from having to think about what are all the different areas that we should be considering. They had already done that work, so... But they are intending to make it a robust set of tools to help municipalities figure out not just what they should be looking at... out, not just what they should be looking at, but how to actually accomplish some of the tasks that would be valuable to accomplish. So the hope there is it'll move from being a nice thing to adopt because it's a little bit useful, and maybe it'll give you some additional points on a grant application, which it probably will, to being something that municipalities turn to if they're trying to figure out how to accomplish something related to sustainability.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
I brought you the question about Dobbs Ferry, and I'm just looking over the screenshots that you have provided regarding their energy and utility tracking. When did they make the change to switch over to LED? And did they just do that change last year, so now they're really beginning to get a review now of really what caused savings?
They, the village started making that change last year. And we had old incandescent streetlights, if you can believe it. We had some really old inefficient street lighting. So it was easy to calculate what the savings should be in that case, because you just compare the wattage of the existing to the wattage of the replacement lights. And then it's just a question of making sure that that is actually translating into your bills. You know, there's steps involved, so it's actually helpful to be able to track it, even though it should be straightforward, you still want to make sure that it's translating into the bills.
Because we, last year, I remember, our DPW superintendent, Matthew DeProssis, with us, where we went through a whole energy audit, actually, and they reviewed every light, basically, within the village. And Frank, over the past year or two, has really upgraded some of the lighting, and we realized to think savings and refund, actually, because things were incorrectly being billed. So we backtracked over five years or so, if I'm correct. And so this coming year now, I mean, I think we really should have a good handle going forward, because probably the majority has been upgraded, or almost, Frank, are we?
On our LED lights?
How far?
Probably one-third to change over every street light. That's probably the last 70 minutes.
Right.
That's wonderful. And you're so lucky to have real leaders in your village, as you know, and for him to have your support. And that's really wonderful. That's great. So one of the nice things about having this kind of software is you can actually demonstrate that.
Sure.
And you can show the people in the village how much money you're saving them, which is wonderful.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Nina, actually, do you mind if, I'm sorry, just a question for you. We had heard, when this had initially been proposed to us, this, the Climate Smart Communities pledge, that we would have the ability to really, that this is just kind of a framework of something that we need to adopt, or we're being asked to adopt. And that really, you know, because I think there are some things here that there's really no controversy. We're looking to, you know, sustainability is something that I think we can all get behind without controversy. Efficiency in energy and transportation, these are easy, right? We all, there's a common goal that I think we all share in terms of sustainable growth and waste, being able to monitor our waste. You know, a lot of this, though, I notice, really talks about, or takes as a given, climate change. And I know that there's been a lot of debate on that, and I think that, you know, in other words, I think what it does is, I read it without being modified, is it takes it as something that's already been decided among our, by your village, right? That the climate change is a result of increased greenhouse gases. And I think there are many people who think that it is, and I think there are some, all I know is, it seems to be something part of ongoing scientific debate. Is there a possibility of really looking to those things where there is not that controversy to adopt a resolution where we're talking about those things, we can all, or come together as a board and make a decision to adopt?
That's a good question. That is something that I think you would need to discuss with the people who are managing the program in New York State. So these are the guidelines that they provide. It is certainly true that they take as a given that climate change is occurring and is a problem. One thing that I would say is, in the work that I've done, for instance, starting in Dobbs Ferry several years ago, the municipality adopted a resolution to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. But the way it was ultimately framed was, if you're reducing emissions, in almost all cases, it means you're using less energy and you're saving money. And whether you're concerned about climate change or not, fossil fuel creates pollution. And it's a real problem here in Westchester, which is a non-attainment area for air quality. So it's all to the good if you can find ways to reduce the amount of energy that you're consuming, as long as you're doing it in a way that you feel is cost-effective, you're looking for the opportunities to do it in a cost-effective manner, and in most cases there are lots of opportunities to do that, that shouldn't be controversial. In other words, the steps that you take to achieve that kind of progress shouldn't be caught in controversy.
Yeah, thank you. That's helpful, and I think that that's true. There's really no debate that those things are common goals irrespective of whether there's debate as to what, you know, what the potential effects are, you know, but I don't think there's any controversy in terms of saving money, reducing pollution, being more efficient.
Right.
So I just, okay, that's helpful.
Can we get a copy of that Dobbs Resolution?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd be happy to send that.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
My pleasure. Again, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thanks. Thanks for coming down tonight. Let's see, okay, moving on, we have no public hearings tonight, and this is going to bring us to the adoption of the minutes. So the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 10th, 2012, way back in last year. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Trustee Giordano.
In favor?
Trustee Quigley.
In favor?
Trustee Luise.
In favor?
Trustee Hayes.
In favor?
Mayor Heck.
I am in favor of that. Do we have any correspondents this time? Where do you know? On appointments, I have one appointment to make this evening, and this is the appointment of Kenneth Kabaaska as a member of the Assessment Review Board to September 30th, 2016. This appointment is to fill a vacancy created on September 30th, 2011. Do I have a motion for this?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I want to thank Mr. Kabaaska, we all know his dad, all of us who went to school in town certainly knows his dad, so... But I also want to take this time to thank all of the volunteers in the village, and I want to especially thank, we have a volunteer, I'm not going to ask her to come to the mic, but she's an intern from Concordia College, and her name is Elizabeth Falby. She's sitting in the back, and she's going to be working with us for the, for a period of time coming up in the village. So I think it's great that we have an enormous amount of volunteerism here, so thank you. Rocco?
Trustee Giordano.
In favor?
Trustee Quigley.
In favor?
Trustee Luise.
In favor?
Trustee Hayes.
In favor?
Mayor Heck.
In favor. And this brings us to the first opportunity to address this board on anything that is on our agenda tonight. There being no comments, I'm going to move to our resolutions. Resolution number one is scheduling a public hearing on the proposed amendments to the Village of Tuckahoe zoning ordinance of 2001. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor?
Trustee Quigley.
In favor?
Trustee Luise.
In favor?
Trustee Hayes.
In favor?
Mayor Heck.
In favor. We will have that public hearing open next month for comment on that. We'll pay a few bills now. Resolution number two is approving the payment of vouchers in the amount of $554,479, consisting of abstract number 29, for $204,099. Abstract number 30 for $18,493. Abstract number 31 for $164,929. Abstract number 32 for $3,001.64. And abstract number 33 for $163,792. The three largest invoices paid were $117,354 for medical insurance premiums for the month of January, $33,792 for the fire hydrant rental for the period of September 4th, 2012, through December 3rd, 2012, and $32,900 for emergency tree work due to Hurricane Sandy, which hopefully we will get reimbursed. Do I have a motion for this?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor?
Trustee Quigley.
In favor?
Trustee Luise.
In favor?
Trustee Hayes.
In favor?
Mayor Heck.
In favor. Resolution number three is authorizing the use of the Tuckahoe Trolley by the Bronxville Adult School for two historic tours of Eastchester, Bronxville, and Tuckahoe. These tours are scheduled for Wednesday, May 8th, from 9:00 to 12:00, and Wednesday, May 29th, from 9:00 to 12:00, and they will leave from the Marble Schoolhouse on California Road in Eastchester. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor?
Trustee Quigley.
In favor?
Trustee Luise.
In favor?
Trustee Hayes.
In favor?
Mayor Heck.
In favor. Resolution number four is accepting a donation from the General Russo-Pope Foundation in the amount of $5,950 to fund costs associated with the New Year's Eve event. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On discussion, I just want to thank David Pope and his foundation for their very generous contribution towards this event, as well as for us to get Winterfest underway. We haven't had a chance to talk about some of the nice things that the Pope Foundation did for us this year. You know, it cost just a couple thousand dollars just for the setting of the tree and the event that was going on down there. And, you know, in this economy, these are funds that we certainly would not have accessible to us in our budget. And it's very nice that the Pope Foundation has sponsored this, so I certainly want to take a moment just to thank them. And I also want to thank Greenskeepers Tree Services and Patrilla Contract, and they also donated their services and manpower to work with Mr. DiMarco and his team for a very long day to get that tree in position, which, take a good look at it, because it's coming down tomorrow.
And I just liked that. I was at the New Year's event, and it turned out to be a great evening. I'd say we had at least 200 people there, a band that was, just got the place jumping, kids were out dancing, lots of streamers, and it was a very, very fun event, so it was a great night for Tuckahoe.
That's wonderful.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor?
Trustee Quigley.
In favor?
Trustee Luise.
In favor?
Trustee Hayes.
In favor?
Mayor Heck.
In favor. Resolution number five is authorizing the village clerk to renew and issue a limited cabaret license to an American Bistro from November 1, 2012, to October 31, 2013. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor?
Trustee Quigley.
In favor?
Trustee Luise.
In favor?
Trustee Hayes.
In favor?
Mayor Heck.
In favor. Resolution number six is designating Tuesday, March 19th, 2013, as Election Day in the Village of Tuckahoe. The polls will be open at 7:00 a.m., and they will close at 9:00 p.m. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor?
Trustee Quigley.
In favor?
Trustee Luise.
In favor?
Trustee Hayes.
In favor?
Mayor Heck.
In favor. Resolution number seven is designating locations of polling places as follows. The 10th, 13th, 14th, 32nd, and 33rd districts will be at the Tuckahoe Community Center, and the 11th and 12th districts will be at the Assumption Church Hall. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor?
Trustee Quigley.
In favor?
Trustee Luise.
In favor?
Trustee Hayes.
In favor?
Mayor Heck.
In favor. Resolution number eight is appointing Matthew Perillo as custodian technician of voting machines for the March 19th village elections. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor?
Trustee Quigley.
In favor?
Trustee Luise.
In favor?
Trustee Hayes.
In favor?
Mayor Heck.
In favor. Resolution number nine is appointing inspectors to serve on Election Day, March 19th, in these seven polling places. The name of the inspectors will be provided by the Democratic and the Republican chairpersons. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor?
Trustee Quigley.
In favor?
Trustee Luise.
In favor?
Trustee Hayes.
In favor?
Mayor Heck.
In favor. Resolution number 10 is a resolution creating, approving, and establishing a Citizens Budget Advisory Committee within the Village of Tuckahoe. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I want to talk about this a little bit, and I'm actually going to ask Mr. Scousa to come up in just a second, but this is a new committee that I've asked to be formed to assist our board during the annual budget process and throughout the entire year. We have some very talented financial minds in the Village of Tuckahoe, and I believe we've tapped into some of their talents with this new committee. The committee is going to be chaired by David Scousa, who you're going to hear from in a second, and the two other members of the committee are Mr. Frank Moran and Mr. Christopher Samios. The members of the committee met with us just this past Thursday at our work session, and I'll say they had some very interesting preliminary thoughts and analysis on our current budget and how it compares to our neighboring municipalities. So this time I'll ask David if he just wants to come on up and say a couple of words about this new committee.
First off, I'd like to thank, start by thanking Mayor Heck and Trustee Hayes and the rest of the village board for endorsing the idea of a Citizens Budget Advisory Committee. It takes tremendous confidence and tremendous honesty to open the inner workings of the village to an independent group, a group that will likely criticize and make suggestions to improve the choices that have been made by previous boards. And now, though we have just begun, I'd also like to thank John Pintos, our village treasurer, for his patience in providing data and answering our questions. And obviously, I'd like to thank Frank Moran and Chris Samios for volunteering to join the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee with me. Hopefully, this committee is a part of the answer to the general distrust that many people have for all levels of government today. As a committee, we hope to provide more transparency, both for the spending and revenue choices that have been made, and also the levers that the village board can use to effect change. Most residents do not understand the mandates imposed by state law and the limited choices that the board has. We hope to clarify these in an easy-to-understand way. As a committee, we will look into the various normal questions that often get asked at the coffeehouses around Tuckahoe and are brought up, you know, often, such as, should we outsource garbage pickup? How many officers do we actually need? How can we spend more on beautification projects? Should we hire a village manager? And can we actually afford to pay someone to make the village website prettier? While the CBAC will be unable to answer these questions definitively, we look forward to working directly with the department heads and the village board to gather facts and lay out the issues more clearly. Basically, we exist to aid the residents and to aid the village board in your decision-making process, and we hope to publish our analysis near the end of March to help you formulate the 2013 budget, which, as you know, will be adopted towards the end of April. Myself, and Chris, and Frank, we all have school-aged children, and we're all interested in seeing Tuckahoe thrive for generations to come, and so we just hope that our efforts help make the community stronger and a more beautiful place to live. Thank you.
Well, we're certainly looking forward to working with you, and I want to thank you for stepping up and taking on this responsibility. I certainly appreciate it.
Thank you. We're looking forward to it.
Anybody else have any comments?
I just wanted to thank them as well.
Yes, welcome to your board.
All three of you. Yeah. And dedicating your time and volunteering your time and service. I know we all look forward to sitting down and reviewing everything with you as we move forward through our budget process. It's just going to start in about two weeks, anyway, and so we're right there, ready to dive in.
Thank you.
We know you are as well.
We're ready.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rocco?
Trustee Giordano.
In favor?
Trustee Quigley.
In favor?
Trustee Luise.
In favor?
Trustee Hayes.
In favor?
Resolution number 11 is approving and authorizing the hiring of Daniel Vitro as laborer for the Village of Tuckahoe Department of Public Works, effective January 22nd, 2013. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
Favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Ackland.
In favor. Resolution number 12 is extending and amending the letter agreement between the village of Tuckahoe and James J. Pinto for consulting services for the administration of the New York State ESD grant for the Crestwood Streetscape Utility Underground Project to provide for an additional $10,000 in funding for such consulting services. The village board originally approved the letter agreement under resolution number 13 dated May 7, 2012. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
I know I will be meeting with Mr. Pinto and Con Ed this Thursday, and hopefully we're going to wrap up a good portion of the negotiations. It's somewhat painful when you're having to negotiate with Con Edison for a utility underground project, as county legislator Sheila Marcot smiles from the Vina Gallery here and knows all too well. Rocco?
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
Favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Ackland.
Very much in favor. This is going to bring us to our departmental reports to the board, but I'm actually going to step out of line here and ask our county legislator Sheila Marcot if she would come on up, since she is somewhat of a department.
Thank you very much. I'll be very brief, and I apologize for getting here late. I tried to make the first opportunity. I just wanted to give you a very quick update on the county budget. I'm sure you've read about it or seen about it on the news. The vote of legislators did arrive at a budget on December 7th. It is a tax levy of $548 million, and that number remains flat from the year before and the year prior to that. So for three years in a row, we have kept the tax levy at a flat number of $548 million out of a $1.7 billion budget. The good news for the town of Eastchester is you will actually see a decrease in your taxes of almost 1% this year in your county taxes, which is a, it's a small portion of your overall tax bill, about 16%, but nonetheless, 1% is 1%. So it's something we're very proud of. The budget in itself, and you've probably heard a lot about it, it was a very unique coalition of legislators. Legislators from both sides of the aisle came together to produce a budget. I'm very happy with this budget, very proud of it. I think it is a very fiscally sound and responsible budget. It is a budget that will get us through, hopefully, all of 2013 without any shortfalls at the end of the year, which is something that the county has year after year produced, always looking at a shortfall, you know, 20 million, 30 million, 89 million, and the numbers grow and grow and grow, and we've been working very hard to try to close that gap. So I just wanted to bring that little budget news to you. It's a good piece of news, and for my, the district that I also represent in New Rochelle, they fared a little better than you. Sorry about that, but they're going to see a decrease of almost 2.5% on their taxes. And as you know, that's all because of the way the assessment is handled at the state and the number that is assigned at the end of the day and how they divvy up the tax levy. So I didn't know if you had any questions about the county budget?
I'm going to ask you a question. You sat on this board, you sat on the town board, and now you're a county legislator. Is it just getting more difficult when you make these steps and working on a budget? Because it's torturous here, I'll tell you.
It is. You know, out of the $548 million, again, it's a $1.7 billion budget, we will levy 548, you know, in taxes, million dollars. 224 million of that 548 goes right to the state, right to the state. So, I mean, you talk about your unfunded mandates, they just get bigger and bigger and bigger, and, you know, right now we're working on our legislative package that we send up to our state leaders. I think you do something similar here. If there's anything that you want me to sort of voice louder at the next level, please let me know within the next couple of weeks. We're happy to do that. But I think, you know, we're all in agreement that the number one thing that we need to see is mandate relief. And we saw the tax cap, and, you know, God bless the governor for getting that done, but he said he would do it and then work immediately on tax mandate relief, and we haven't seen it yet. And that's unfortunate that that piece of the puzzle hasn't been done yet. We really need to do that, because, Steve, you know those numbers get bigger and bigger every year, and you have no choice but to pay it, and when you're faced with decreasing revenues, you know, a shrinking tax base, you don't want to cut your essential services. It's something, I know we worked very diligently up at the county on how do we preserve that service, those important services, and you're faced with the same battle. So I certainly wish you luck as you, you know, delve into your big budget coming, as you're going to start in a couple of weeks, as you indicated, so I wish you well there. If I can just take a minute, I want to put on my Historical Society hat for a minute because I just came from a meeting, and I want to thank the Rotary, who this past weekend presented us with a $1,000 donation to put towards our roof. And our very good fortune, a couple of weeks before that, we were presented with a $5,000 anonymous donation. Somebody from the community actually heard about our roof woes, if you will, and gave us $5,000. They wish not to be named, and I respect that, of course. That's the good news. The bad news is, well, we spent, you know, much of last year reaching out into the community trying to raise funds to put a new roof on the 1835 one-room schoolhouse. Unfortunately, we were not aware that the library, which is the building behind the schoolhouse, which is only about maybe 30 years old, the roof is in worse shape than the schoolhouse. And so now we have two roofs that are leaking. So we're battling that by now with the Historical Society, but I want to thank the Rotary, I want to thank the person who gave us the anonymous donation, and the community has been very, very generous in their emails and their donations and offers to help, and, you know, it doesn't go unnoticed. We're very, very thankful to all of that, so. And then, lastly, I wanted to mention Melissa Rentsch. She was one of my Historical Society board members for many years. She served as a vice president for two years, and she very unexpectedly passed away on vacation in the beginning of December. So I just wanted to, in her memory, mention her name. She was a very strong advocate of the Historical Society. She was a hard worker, always out there, you know, helping us raise funds, helping us with all of our programs, and she will be missed in the community.
Well, thank you for that, and good luck with the schoolhouse. I know that Jack Flannery is going to be out there this weekend.
Yeah, we have, he's going to be doing his life project. He's going to be sprucing up, and, you know, we encourage anyone, if you're driving by during the weekend on Saturday, just to pop in and see what the schoolhouse looks like. So, thank you so much. Have a good meeting.
Thank you. Thank you for coming down. I'll ask our chief of police, John Costanza, if he'd like to come on up for a monthly report.
Good evening again. I just wanted to thank you again, Mayor, for that opportunity earlier to talk about Chief Mignon, but at this time I'd like to just thank some of the local police departments who were so helpful to us during the services for the chief. I thanked the dozens of police departments that participated in the motorcades and their attendance, and I talked to their chiefs personally and wrote them letters thanking them, but I just publicly need to thank our local departments, starting with Scarsdale first. The church was Immaculate Heart of Mary in Scarsdale, and we presented them with a pretty big undertaking, and all the traffic diversions and road closures and security that is necessary for the church during the ceremony. And Chief John Brogan and his staff did a magnificent job, and I just wanted to thank them publicly. I want to thank our Eastchester Police Department and Bronxville Police Department during the services, allowed every member of the Tuckahoe Police Department to attend the wake. Eastchester sent one of the sergeants down to man our desk. They sent the police car, and Bronxville sent a car so that the village was fully covered for the hour so that members attended the wake. And for the funeral services, Bronxville dedicated a car, the whole eight-to-four tour, so that every member that worked with Chief Mignon was able to attend. So, you know, I can't thank these police departments, Chief Bonzi from Eastchester, Chief Zatrielli from Bronxville, for their kindness during this very difficult time. And to our fire department, Chief Michael Brogan, they set up a beautiful, with two ladders, two ladder trucks, they set up a huge American flag for the motorcade to pass as it came before Village Hall. It was a beautiful tribute to him, very touching. The family was very, very much appreciative, and so, again, just want to take that opportunity to thank all these people that were so very kind and helpful to us.
Appreciate that. Chief, could I ask you, I just have a little bit of business. I know I mentioned I was going to bring this up tonight. For quite a while now, I've had a resident who lives on Coolidge Street has asked if I would bring to this board's attention, and we're going to ask for your opinion on this, if we would consider changing the parking restrictions on it, or to restrict parking on that street. I know that we've talked about it a little bit, and I know this resident's reached out to me on numerous occasions, he's called the clerk's office, I'm told now that he's been in touch with DPW, so he's very passionate about this, and I want to give him his, you know, his day here. He's not, obviously, he's not here at our meeting, but I did promise him that we would talk about it tonight. Can you explain a little bit of this background on this for us?
Well, I guess it's best to talk about the overtime and the resident permit parking structure.
Okay.
The permit parking was enacted and went into law in 1985, and the purpose of the law was to address commuters parking in residential areas and overwhelming local residences with people who commute to the city. And, secondly, businesses and business employees and business owners who would park again in residential areas to get away from either buying a permit or putting money in a long-term meter. And then finally, at the time, I think there was an issue with Concordia College with an overwhelming population of college students parking up in Gifford Park. So, the laws prior to 1985 was the two- and four-hour overtime restrictions, there was no relief for the residents. They had to move their cars every two and four hours, just like everybody else. And then in 1985, the village enacted the law for the purposes of addressing commuters, business owners, and at that time, school students who parked in residential areas. So it was enacted to, and a whole system was put in place. If you're home, butted a two- or four-hour overtime restriction, there's a criteria if you have Wall Street parking already and the number of permits that are allowed. And so it's been in place since 1985. It actually had to go before the state legislature and had to be signed into law by the governor in the vehicle and traffic law to allow Tuckahoe to do that. So not only was it, had to be approved on the local level, but then had to be approved on the state level. There's actually a section in the New York State Vehicle and Traffic Law that just talks about parking in Tuckahoe. So that's the basis of it. Going back to what happens on Coolidge is, none of those three prongs or those three criterias are the issue. There are no commuters parking on Coolidge, there are no business owners or employees, and there's certainly no students who park there that overwhelm the neighborhood. Coolidge, look, I live right up the street, neighbors with the person who's responsible for inquiring about this change. I know him my whole life, I respect him, but hopefully we could agree to disagree. There really is no problem. This morning coming to work, there was eight or nine cars easily fit on Coolidge. This morning at 7:45 on my way to work, there was one car parked on the street.
And at I-30, there was one car, because I went by it today.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Coming down to the meeting tonight, there were three cars parked on the street. And again, this restriction only is in play 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and not on weekends. It's Monday through Friday, holidays are excluded. So if there were, just for argument's sake, if there was a problem in the evening with people coming home from work, this would give that particular homeowner no relief.
Right.
However, like I said, tonight, if this was a snapshot, there were three spaces taken, another five or six still available. So, there really is no underlying problem with parking in general, and then when you give it the litmus test of both your governing body and more restrictive is the state end, it doesn't meet that criteria at all.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Question asked and question answered, so appreciate that. I'm going to move on to Frank DiMarco.
Good evening. I was going to try to do this without my glasses, but it's not going to happen.
You're getting too old for that.
No. Back, again, backed by popular demand, our 2013 sanitation and recycling calendar is on the web. We should be handing out flyers in a couple of weeks, but I begin overwhelming phone calls in reference to our new calendar, which is great, so people are viewing it. Secondly, Monday, January 21st, DPW will be closed in honor of Martin Luther King Day. Garbage will be picked up on a Tuesday, and bulk and e-waste will be picked up that Thursday. I know we briefly touched LED fixtures. I would say at this point, the village is about a third completed with LED fixtures. If you go down Columbus Avenue, Fisher, Lincoln, and many spots in between, instead of changing bulbs, we're not changing fixtures, so we're converting everything over to LED. Also to the residents, you know, when there's inclement weather conditions, such as ice or snow, I'm asking that they please make sure that the path to the garbage is cleared and safely treated for the sanitation team to travel. Because a lot of times they go out there early in the morning, you know, it's dark and they really can't see what's going on, so if they could just make sure that the snow or icy conditions are all eliminated, just to make it safe for everybody. Yonkers Avenue.
Oh gee, you're taking my thunder. I was going to talk about that.
Yonkers Avenue is now open. Once DPW started working, Con Edison came in and made their repairs. They repaired the collapsed sewer, and they also repaired the collapsed electrical underground service that was needed. So I was hoping that they would come in once we started the work to make all those necessary repairs. DPW, on the other hand, has taken on the following in-kind services on Yonkers Avenue. You know, people always ask, what are we doing there? They see us working and moving around, but they really don't know of the items that we've taken on here at DPW. First of all, we demoed the entire road, the existing concrete road. We formed and poured over 400 yards of concrete cement on that road. We constructed concrete curbing detail along the river, which also houses our guide rails, installation of the metal guide rails along the river and the road, installation of three decorative lamp fixtures between the Yonkers Avenue and the river, which was not part of our original plan, so we've incorporated that also. But in installing the three decorative light fixtures, there was all underground conduit manholes and wiring that needed to take place also, so all of that has been done by DPW. We installed additional stoneboard catch bases at the end of the road, which was needed, just to alleviate a lot of the flooding that historically had taken place in that location. So we've taken on a lot of additional work, hopefully alleviate a lot of the problems that had historically taken place there. We're also placing additional stones along the river's edge. Placing additional stones will also help us with any future erosion, so it's really required. We repaired sections of sidewalk, and we're going to be repaving the entire road in the spring of 2013. All of this work was done in-house, saving taxpayer dollars. All of this work was done in-house, saving taxpayer dollars. Not only did the men of DPW have maintained the village, but pulled together to work as a team, completing Yonkers Avenue. As the workday progressed, they didn't look for an eight-hour day to end, but only to complete whatever phase of work needed to be done regardless of time. They worked in rain, snow, cold. They delivered what was promised to the village, and that was to open Yonkers Avenue on January seventh. They were a great team, and I am proud of their accomplishments, as they should be proud of themselves and what they do. As their supervisor and resident of the village, I thank you for all the work you do. I also wanted to thank the other departments that also assisted, the police department, building department, all the departments, especially the ladies at my office. I wanna say thank you.
Thank you, Frank. You know, uh, well, and certainly the ladies in the front office feel that all the complaints from the residents who were just kinda, you know, they were at the end of their rope, towards the end of this project, and I understand that. You know, your, your department did just a phenomenal job, and, you know, what people don't realize is that, or maybe they do realize, but you and I are acutely aware of the fact that we had no authority or permission to step foot on that street until we were given that, which didn't happen until, I think it was around December fourteenth or fifteenth, middle of December. It was after our last board meeting. And, you know, as soon as we were handed the keys, I use that analogy all the time, as soon as we were given the keys to our road back, um, you did a phenomenal job in getting the road ported and getting it open. I mean, there was an awful lot of work that people just, you know, do not see that occurred down there. But not only that, you know, the village, we still had our garbage picked up, you know, we still had, we had a weather event in, in between all that. So there was an awful lot of things that occurred. You know, you kept the village still up and running, and I certainly, you know, wanna thank you personally for that. I thought about this actually the other day, and I said, you know, um, it was nine years ago last week that when Mike Martino gave me a phone call and said, Steve, uh, grab your Bible and come on down. I'm gonna swear you in as a trustee here for the village. Ever since then, I've been liaison with the Public Works Department for nine years, and I can tell you that, uh, it's just amazing how much construction work our Department of Public Works does today versus only just a short nine years ago where we were a trash, we did trash collection and, um, park maintenance and light tree trimming. Um, you know, we are a full-service Department of Public Works, and, uh, you know, I, I really attribute a lot of that to you. With your construction background, your electrical background, I think you've done the residents very proud.
Thank you.
And this, you definitely, uh, your light was shining on the last couple of weeks, for sure.
Thank you.
Anybody else wanna just?
Yeah, I'm sorry, if I could just add, sort of dovetail what the mayor's saying. Uh, I think this is a great example, and, and this is something we'll be discussing coming into budget season, is how our investment of taxpayer money into building a sizable and a very qualified Department of Public Works has paid off in spade in the long run, uh, saving, I'm sure, thousands of dollars in what would have otherwise cost to hire outside contractors to do all the work that you just discussed that you did in Lake Avenue, on Yonkers Avenue. So I, I think it's just a great example of how the village is working on this.
We did, you know, you actually, you, you raise a good point. We had to subcontract everything out, um, back then. You know, we just didn't have the, uh, equipment, we didn't have the, uh, supervision, we didn't have the capacity to go ahead and do these, uh, we, we didn't have the leadership, really, to go ahead and do these projects. So, uh, it's definitely a big cost savings for the taxpayers, so thank you very much. Appreciate it.
The potential and the skills are in the department, and, and it's just, you know, it's great seeing them being productive and actually looking at something they've developed and worked on.
And it, it was interesting, I spent a lot of time, as you know, down there, to see that a lot of the men, you know, who were kinda stepping out of their element of maybe trash collection, and they were now building concrete forms, you know, they really took a lot of ownership and pride in performing that, uh, that task. And I guess it was probably, you know, kinda nice for them just to step out of their day-in, day-out routine, but you know what? I got a sense that, you know what, a lot of those guys, now that that road is open and they're driving their family down, hey, I built that road. That was, that's something that I did. So, uh, it made me feel good that a lot of the, uh, you know, a lot of the guys who worked for you, that they really took a lot of, you know, a lot of ownership of what they were doing.
They really did.
Thank you. So, great work.
I'm sorry, one more total unrelated question, but this anticipates the question is gonna be, uh, coming up very shortly at our second opportunity to address the board. The new streetlights are going in. Are they brighter, same as, or not as bright as the ones that are being replaced?
Uh, I'm actually experimenting with, um, the decorative lampposts that we have in the village right now. Some are clarity, some are too bright. They, they should really be historically dimmed lights, the historical fixtures, uh, and they should be, really be a little dimmer than as bright as they are. So I'm, I'm getting, uh, sample light bulbs that are LED fixtures, LED bulbs, and I'm putting them in designated locations, so you can see them and view for yourself, and let me know what you think.
Okay, hang around, I think there's gonna be some questions for you in a little bit.
Okay.
Bill, do you have anything for us tonight? John Pintos? Our village councillor? Nothing at all? Camille? Miscellaneous business, I have, our next village board meeting is going to be held on Monday, February fourth, two thousand and thirteen. I would like everybody to know that the village offices, and as Frank just mentioned, DPW will be closed on Monday, January twenty-first, in observance of the Martin Luther King holiday. And this will now bring us to our Board of Trustees' member reports. Now, we're gonna kick it off with your deputy mayor, Tom Giordano.
Thanks, Mayor Eklund. Just a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to echo, uh, Mayor Eklund and some of the board members' comments regarding the Budget Advisory Committee, and thanks to David, Chris, and Frank for forming it and constituting it. I think that that will, we, we've already seen through, through our, our first meeting, the light that can be shed on the, on the budget and, and the way it can be reconstituted in ways that, that, that allow us to analyze and try to come up with creative and effective solutions. So, thank you. Regarding the zoning board, uh, there is no meeting this month. The, uh, the meeting for this month has been canceled. The next meeting is on February thirteenth. The schedule has not been, uh, there's no schedule yet for it. The work session will be at six thirty. The planning board will meet on January twenty-second at seven thirty PM. The work session is that same night at six forty-five PM. The two items are one hundred Main Street, which is an architectural review, and twenty Chestnut Street, which is an amended site plan review.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Quin.
Thank you, Mayor. Chamber of Commerce, their big comedy show is coming up this Thursday, January seventeenth. You've heard this for the past several months. It was a great event last year. It's expected to be a great event this year. It'll be at Fogarty's in Bronxville. Uh, information's on their website, which can be linked at, uh, either just going to eastchestertoccochamberofcommerce.com or through the village's website. And, uh, one of the events that the Chamber of Commerce has done on a regular basis and is actually expanding this year is their scholarship program. They've always given one scholarship to, uh, a graduating senior from both Eastchester and from Tocco High School. This year, they're looking to give two scholarships to students from each of these schools. It's a great fundraising among the, uh, the Chamber of Commerce, and I think it is a testament to how well they're involved in our community. Uh, since our, now, the library, since our last board meeting, we've had our hundredth anniversary celebration for the library, and it was a celebration over at the community center. Uh, we had a great turnout. Uh, it was organized and a lot of work put in by the library board, and I, I think it's worth mentioning, uh, just again dovetailing what the mayor said earlier about the volunteers in our community. Ginger Crosby, who is the chairperson of the board, along with board members Christine Ferrante, Allison Chilson, Mickey Brant, and Keith Minnick, put a lot of work, uh, putting together the food, the drink, posters, historical pictures, articles, uh, the raffle, everything that, put it all together and made it a great, uh, event for, I think, everybody in Tocco, library users and non-library users. And of course, uh, it's just great with our relatively new director now, not so new actually, Swarice Panchada, Panchnada, who has been, uh, really steering the library in a great direction into the twenty-first century. Uh, and as you'll hear in a minute, we've got eBooks, and we've got downloadable music, and we've got all sorts of things at the library. So it's just become, uh, an ever greater and greater resource for the village of Tocco. And it was really nice to have everybody turn out, not only from our own village, but I would note that we, you know, we had the usual gang of the mayor and the trustees and all, uh, from both the Eastchester and from Tocco, but also Sheila Marcott from the Westchester County Board of Legislators there, our state assembly person, Amy Pollan, was there, and our newly-elected, uh, state senator, George Latimer, came by as well. So it's just nice getting that kind of attention from the people who, uh, are in these positions in the state and in the county. So, coming up on the library very timely is the AARP Tax Aid Program, every Friday for the next two and a half months, uh, from ten thirty to twelve thirty. Come to the library with your tax issues. There'll be some qualified volunteers to help you work through all the tax matters that are coming up. Uh, this Thursday at two o'clock in the afternoon, Charlotte Rogan, who wrote the book The Light Boat, will be at the library discussing her book. Uh, as I mentioned, the, the library is very much into the technology of the twenty-first century, and you can now not only download books, but you can check out a NOOK e-reader from the Tocco Library. Uh, just come to the library, they'll explain how to do it, all the terms for taking the, uh, the NOOK home with you, so you can read your books that way. There'll be Rocket Languages, this is, uh, various foreign languages will be presented at the library. There's a way to, to access that through the library's website. On January eighteenth, for the children five to eight, we'll be dancing through books. It'll be, uh, exploring dance and reading, uh, and together. Uh, for the teens, Career Night, this time will be the owner and the executive chef of Blackboard Pizza will be always showing up, uh, not only showing you how to run a pizza place, but will be serving his own pizza as well. Uh, that's again, uh, that'll be January twenty-eighth at seven o'clock for grades six and older. And there's lots more on the website. Uh, drop by the library anytime, there's all sorts of information there, and, uh, that's it for a moment.
It's always amazing how much is going on at the library.
That's really part of it.
Um, trustee Lewis.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, that time has finally come where, and I've been talking about this for a few months, but this is officially Barbara Stires, last month as director of the Tocco Senior Center. After many, many years of servicing the seniors of Tocco, she is off to enjoy her second retirement. She's being replaced by Jeanette.
Vetramile.
Vetramile. And we, I look forward and the board, we welcome her aboard, and I'll be working with them, uh, at their next executive board meeting. The big event, um, that the Tocco seniors will be participating in this month will be a trip to the Resort World Casino at Aqueduct Raceway on Thursday, January twenty-fourth. And of course, throughout the week, they have medical people that come in for, um, audio testing and blood pressure testing. So once again, congratulations to Barbara on your retirement. If I could just piggyback off of what we said earlier, I'd like to thank Frank DiMarco and the entire DPW department for doing what couldn't be done by, um, another company whose name we won't mention. But it's amazing that the job was completed in the amount of time that it was completed and without any pain to the village, so to speak, in the time that, that you, that it finally did take off. I'd like to commend the chief and, and the department on moving all the detour signs that dotted the village. I, I know it's just a job in and of itself, moving those Jersey barriers off of Main Street, and, you know, January seventh, there it was, as I drove to work, it was open. I almost got hit by, well, because I run the stop sign for the last eighteen months, but that's neither here nor there. But again, thank you for you and, and your department for, for everything you've done. On a lighter note, uh, I was in Village Hall earlier this week, and I, I ran into this gentleman by the name of Nick Zanzano. I was introduced to him by Allison Phil White. And what Mr. Zanzano was doing is he's undertaking this project as a volunteer for the village, and what he's doing is he's scanning in all these historic photographs of the village going as far back as the eighteen hundreds. And what he's doing is he's cataloging them, and eventually, he hopes to make it available to the residents, he's gonna put it on a DVD. Right now, the work that he has accomplished is on the village website, so just click, go to the village website, and there's a section on the menu bar for historic photographs, and you can see the work that he's done so far. And that's all I have, Mayor.
That's fantastic. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Hayes.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few announcements. First, our next Tree Committee will be meeting this Wednesday, January sixteenth at seven thirty PM here at Village Hall. And our next Environmental Committee will be meeting on Wednesday, February sixth, at seven thirty PM. And just a reminder, both groups wanted me to mention to all of our residents that if anyone is of course interested in joining either our Environmental or Tree Committee, we are always looking for new volunteers to sign up and join us. So please feel free to reach out to me, our clerk's office, they'll put you in touch with me, and we're always happy to have new members. And I'm surprised that our county legislator didn't mention this, but I did get a note today from the town, and they asked me to make an announcement that also this Wednesday, January sixteenth, at Eastchester Town Hall at seven PM, our county executive, Rob Astorino, will be holding a town hall meeting called Ask Astorino. This town hall meeting is open to all of our Tocco, Eastchester, and Bronxville residents, and they are encouraged to come, listen, and discuss with our county executive how our county government continues to work for us. So I just wanted to make that announcement and remind everyone that everyone is welcome to Eastchester Town Hall on Wednesday evening at seven PM. That's what I have for this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My report's gonna be, uh, somewhat brief. I'm just gonna, uh, follow up a little bit on the Yonkers Avenue project, my final word on that. I did a walkthrough down there with Frank DiMarco and the representatives from the Army Corps. Basically, it was a final walkthrough, just for them to inspect the work that the contractors and subcontractors had done, to make sure that it was done properly. And a conversation I had with Karen Ashton, who, uh, has been to many of our board members, our, our board meetings, um, is, hey, what about the extra money that we're supposed to get for the delay in the project? And she said that the, uh, they're doing an analysis, but it's about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Unfortunately, from what she's telling me, um, it's gonna be many, many years before the village sees this money. Uh, the money is in part a reimbursement credit to the village because, uh, the contractor, actually, when he formed part of the concrete curb, he had it at an incorrect elevation, so we had to, when we got the keys to that job, we had to hire a subcontractor to go out and saw cut his, uh, error. And then in addition to that, there was that eight hundred and something dollars a day after June thirtieth that he was responsible for. So there is a sum of money that the village is gonna get back. We haven't done the final accounting for this project yet, but, uh, we're, I can tell you that, uh, I know the village is certainly gonna put the, uh, foot on the gas pedal to get those funds back. I wanna talk about, uh, something that has been many years in the making, and I'm just gonna mention the name ninety-nine Main Street. Uh, some of the people at home will certainly recognize that address. It's the address out here on Main Street where the sidewalk shed has been standing for many, many years. Uh, so after many years of wading through the legal channels to allow the village to take action on this neglected property, last Wednesday at eleven o'clock in the morning, myself along with our, uh, the village's engineer, our building inspector, Bill Williams, our code enforcement officer, Frank DiMarco, uh, we had members from the Tocco Police Department and the Eastchester Fire Department. We finally gained access to the building, and we did this to make a determination on the building's condition and to prepare a course of action on how we're going to safeguard the public. So we're, have to make a, or the, uh, engineer has to make a determination whether or not that building has to come down, or whether or not the building can be repaired to a safe condition, and then that sidewalk shed can be removed, and people can use that sidewalk again properly. So it's been, uh, a painful process to get to where we are. We have been very, very patient. I wanna thank John Capillaro, um, who has been very patient in making sure that we have dotted our i's and crossed our t's with respect to exactly what we're doing in trying to protect our public with this neglected building. So, uh, we're going to, uh, make sure that we take this full circle. And hopefully, we're gonna have that report from the engineer within the next week or two, and I will then circulate that to the board members and our village councillor, and we'll, uh, take it to the next step. So we're being very cautious, we're taking it one step at a time, but it was a real eye-opener to get inside that building and see how much it's deteriorated since the, uh, part of the roof has caved in and the whole facade has separated from the building. You can imagine that, uh, the building was just taking in rain and snow and, uh, you know, animals, and, uh, it's, it's quite a mess inside, so, uh, but I'm happy that we're finally in there, and we're gonna go ahead and fix this problem now. Um, over the past few months, I've had a few meetings with the principals from both the Glenmark Development Project, which is the old Crestwood RV site, and the, uh, Street Works Crestwood Project principals. After a long wait, it seems that this year, both of these projects are finally going to materialize. With respect to the Glenmark Project, I discussed a timeline with Mr. Vetramile, Glenn Vetramile. Um, he stated he's gonna be starting his demolition of the remaining structures sometime over the next month. Actually, I think he was in, visiting the building inspector today about this. Um, he's then gonna be submitting construction drawings to the building department for review, and then he would be issued his building permit at that point. What's of significance to this board is the fact that he has a six hundred thousand dollar check that he has to bring us for his building department fee. Uh, Mr. Vetramile has assured me that this will be fully paid before May of this year, which is the end of our current fiscal year. And that's important, because we did budget for a portion of that, uh, fee. So, uh, I was happy that he did make that personal commitment, and I certainly expect him to. I certainly expect him to follow through on that, but I know that they have to start their work sooner than later, so it's time. It's time for that project, as well as the Crestwood Project. The principals, this project, they've revised their project timeline, and they're now going to contemplate a groundbreaking during April of this year. They too have a significant building department fee, which is going to be around $200,000, maybe a little more. They expect that they're going to be putting 10, over $10 million into that building where those two abandoned gas stations are. So both of these projects, along with the project across the street, people remember the old Salerno's Restaurant, the address is 100 Main Street. That project has now navigated its way through our boards, and that will, I assume, is going to be coming out of the ground this year. I know it is, that he was very anxious. We have a new car wash that's going to be coming up on Marbledale Road. It's going to be a very busy year on the building department, so I hope you've taken your vacation time though. And yeah, I was going to mention the brewery down on Marbledale Road, but I figured, you know what, I'll wait a little bit more before we talk about that. So quite a bit of business activity that's going to be coming in the year 2013 in Tuckahoe. That's all I have to talk about, so this is going to give us our second opportunity to address the board. And I know Mr. Marinello's going to want to talk to us, but I'm just going to ask him if you would please allow this, a woman here has been waiting patiently all evening, and I did tell her that I would ask her to come and speak for us tonight. So if you would just come to the microphone and let us know your name and address.
My name is Joan Ronson. I reside at the Tower Club. I've been a resident of Tuckahoe for 12 years. I refer to the accident last Friday evening at 7 o'clock on Circuit Avenue. I observed it, because my, I looked at my, I went on my terrace, and I saw a woman lying in the street. She had been hit by a car. I refer to that, since there were many people in the building who were elderly. I am one of them, and I walk constantly. I am a member of the library, and I'm very proud of Mr. Quigley, how he spoke about us. That was wonderful, that was really great. I'm going to go back tomorrow and tell all my friends that you're a real friend of our library.
Thank you.
And what concerns me is that it's very dark there, and people disregard the traffic signs, not making left turns, right turns, they go past the lights, they, I've seen them, I try to cross the street, there isn't time enough to cross the street, because it's too short a period of time for an elderly person. I've walked to the hairdresser, and I find it very difficult, I have three times, I have to push the button, one, two, three, and it's over, now you have to wait again for the light to change. I have seen, I don't know if you agree with me, but I think the thing over here is to put a camera in the traffic light opposite my building, because it's very upsetting to me, it's very dark, and I'm afraid to cross the street at night. I think people are terrible, they come out of the building, they're supposed to go around the circle, they do not, they go right straight across, which is another hazard. My neighbors will probably hate me, but I don't care, because I'm concerned about the people and the children that pass. There are people, elderly people, they come from the sub, from the train station, and it is very dark, and I just walked down here, and I think it's wonderful to have decorative lights, but I think it's more important to have lighting sufficient for us as we're an aging population. And I speak for myself and other seniors, and I don't think it's wrong to have that, and I don't think it's against our First Amendment. I think if you don't observe the law, then the law has to help you observe it. And I used to tell the kids in my, in my class, I, they say, Mrs. Ronson, why do you have all these rules and regulations? I said, well, we need them. When people don't observe the laws, then we have to remind them, and that's the problem. And I'm the teacher, and you are the students, and I'm the boss in this classroom, and we are, we are the people who are, I love this country, I love my country, and I want to know, and I'm a third-generation American, and I really feel it is not a violation of your civil rights to have a camera in a traffic light.
I'm curious if you could just help me out here a little bit. When you say it's a dark intersection, do you mean the intersection of Columbus Avenue and Circuit?
And Circuit.
Not, and the accident was, where was the accident? Was it on?
Right underneath my bedroom window. It was, I am at the apartment, faces the street.
Columbus Avenue or Circuit?
It was the, it was on the corner, across the street from the library.
Okay.
On Circuit and Columbus. And it was 7 o'clock, Friday night, that was the third, what was the date? 11. And 7 o'clock, I got a telephone call from a friend, looked out the window, go on the terrace, there are ambulances, there are fire engines, there are police cars, and there's a poor old lady lying in the street, and I did see her being picked up by a stretcher and carried off. Very upset about that.
Well, we'll take a look at the lighting issue there. I don't, I'm not familiar, I don't have a, you know, I can't picture it right now. It's one of the decorative lamp posts we have, not the old-fashioned?
I don't know if it's decorative or not decorative.
We'll take a look at it.
It's not dark, it's not light enough. And I do believe they have cameras on Central Avenue, and I lived in the Bronx, they have cameras in the Bronx on the Grand Concourse Boulevard, where I taught, and there's nothing wrong with it. Because if people can't obey the law, then it's up to us to show them how.
I know they have the red light cameras in Yonkers, because I have to say that I have gotten one of those tickets in the mail.
But I think that's a deterrent, I really do. And people don't, some people in the building I spoke to said, don't, but don't do this, don't come here and talk about it. And I said, I don't care if you like it.
Believe it or not, I think you'll be able to go back and tell them, and I'm going to ask the chief to come up and address this, but if, from what I remember, because we had this conversation about a year or so ago, we are not, villages are not allowed to do it. I think it's only cities are allowed to have red light cameras. But I'll ask the chief to comment on that. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak, I appreciate it.
Sure.
Mayor, you actually write, the state law, as it stands now, allows cities of a certain population to have the red light cameras, and I think all of Long Island, for whatever reason, villages and towns can have it, but nowhere else in the state as it stands now. So even if we wanted to, and I do believe it's a deterrent, we wouldn't be permitted to under the state law.
Okay.
As it stands now.
So Mrs. Ronson, she wants this kind of, she'd have to go to her state legislators, and it would be, it'd be a state law that would be, have to change to allow it in a place like the village?
That's correct.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Mr. Marinello, please come on up. Thank you for coming out tonight.
Good evening. Joe Marinello, a lifelong resident, born and raised in the village, been here 82 years, a long time. John, our present chief, just stands out, was interviewed by me and recommended that he become a police officer in this village. He's the only active police officer that I actually hired, and is still working for the village. The other one, and John did a beautiful job in paying tributes to someone I love very dearly, and that was Chief Munoz. I actually hired him. I was the commissioner, recommended to the village, to the village board, when we instituted there, and a youth officer, that he be appointed. I never regretted that recommendation, and he made me very proud of him. I could tell you stories about Jerry, and I'm not here to talk to you about Jerry. I did my talking to him when I went up to visit him, and he was very gracious, as always he was with my children. Last year, with the loss of my beloved grandson, he called me to console me, and he prayed with me, as sick as he was. Jerry was an unbelievable human being, very close to me. He loved to grow tomatoes, but he could never understand why I grew better tomatoes than he did. And he'd always come to my side door, knock on it, we'd sit there, and I'd make him go in my garden and pick out whatever ones he wanted to take home. So the chief did do an outstanding job describing Jerry. I did get calls from a couple newspapers that wanted me to quote this, and I refused to do it. I didn't refuse to do it, because I didn't want to see my name in the newspaper anymore, because I worked for a newspaper for 39 years. But I just didn't think that I was able to describe my feelings about Jerry Munoz. Now, I don't disagree, and I don't have any hard feelings with our present chief, but I do disagree with him on the situation on Coolidge. And that's why I'm here tonight. It wasn't easy, because I had to get one of my sons to come over and sit in the house while I came here, to tell you I disagree with what the chief just told you as a board. First of all, there are only two homes on Coolidge, and those are the Savianos and me, and we both agree that we need the two-hour restriction. And the reason I'm saying that is, 39 streets surrounding Coolidge, half of Chestnut and where the chief lives on Birdie, has all restrictions. Now, when I came here tonight, my tenants in my driveway blocked me, I had to call them, ring the bell, have them move it to the side, so I could come down and talk to you. He comes home at 9:00, there's no place for him to park. Right now, I counted three on the bottom of Coolidge and five going up, two are residents. Those other six cars don't belong on Coolidge. They're not residents of Coolidge. Probably residents of the village, but they're not residents of Coolidge. What happened, and it's very simple, you don't have to be a genius to understand what happened. When you have all that restrictions on 39 streets surrounding that one street, you're going to get people that can't park on Circuit anymore, can't park on Rogers, I'm telling them, they're all going to come up here, and that's what they do.
But is it just, I'm not going to, we'll have a little dialogue here, because I want to understand this. The chief has also told us that in the evening, it doesn't really matter, because...
I understand, I heard.
Okay, all right.
But the point is, on Rogers Street, by the way, I was born on Circuit Avenue. I built the house where I am presently living in '59, but moved in in '60. So hey, I'm only two and a half blocks from where I was actually born. Now Rogers Street, take a ride, any of you tonight on your way home or wherever, Rogers Street, when you go down Circuit and you make a right, Rogers Street had no restrictions. Originally, they had two-hour restrictions. Then the two-hour signs came down mysteriously, and there were cars parked all over that spot. I guess the seminar must have said something, because now the two-hour parking signs are back up there. Here's what I'm telling you, reconsider our request. The two homeowners, the taxpayers who live on their street, are requesting the two-hour zone? I don't think I'm asking for anything more than anyone else. 95% of the homeowners in this village have. What's the problem? Doesn't make any sense to me. I'm not concerned about Birdie, and I'm not concerned about half of Chestnut, which I never understood, how you have a restriction on half of the street, and the other street has no restriction. Yep, upper part of Chestnut has none, the bottom part has a two-hour. So it breaks my heart to run down here and explain my, my problem, what we, I have a problem.
No, I'm glad you did, I'm glad you came down.
And I'm glad I did too, and, but the only thing I would like you to do is reconsider that, because I don't think it's fair for you to give 95% of the homeowners in this village a restricted street, and you don't want, for some reason, to give us on Coolidge. And by the way, it's 100% that agree that we need the two-hour parking. I really would appreciate you considering.
There's only two families, you say, who live there, yourself and Burd?
I, you know, they, Mayor, by the way, I want to thank you very much for bringing this up tonight. That's from me to you, my good friend Tom, and all your trustees. I don't know Mr. Quigley that well, but I'm going to be very honest with you, I, I just don't understand what the big deal is. I know what the problem is. The problem is Chestnut. There's one spot of Chestnut that has no parking, and it's a problem. But I don't, I don't know if it's from Chestnut, I got it from Circuit Avenue, I got it from Birdie, I got it from other areas of the village, they just come up there and sit there. I had cars there for five days. Five straight days, it happens. Tonight, please go by, and you'll see, my tenants in the driveway, I had to move it over, when his wife comes home, many times, she has no place to park.
But he could park now in the evening, you're, there's no parking available, you're saying, right now? Because all the spots are taken out?
Well, he came home pretty early at night, he only comes home pretty late, his wife comes home a little earlier, but, no, he came home late, earlier. Actually, he was home by 6 o'clock, there was no, there was no spot on, absolutely none. There was none. I don't want to make a big deal out of this, but the point I'm saying is, there are only two homes on Coolidge. One is the Savianos, and one is Marinello's. I'm number one, I'm number four, rather, and they're number one, and that's what we need, we need some relief. And I hope you reconsider that, because I, I don't want to be after you for the next two years, Steve, or any other member of the board. But I only think it's fair that you give me the relief I'm seeking, and I would appreciate it, because I'm not asking for anything that the other village residents don't have right now. And by the way, I was born on Circuit Avenue, and so I, I know what the complications were down there. When I get out of church sometimes, with the assumption, I'm amazed myself, when I go up Wallace now, I see oodles of parking spots that were never there when I grew up in this village. And neither were those parking spots available on Circuit Avenue, where I was born. But they are now. On my way down here tonight, two spots on Circuit Avenue. I should know. I've been around for 82 years, and I love the village, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to tell you how I feel about the situation.
Well, thank you for coming out, I appreciate it. Anybody else have anything to add tonight? If not, if we have no other business tonight, I will ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Do I have a second for that?
Two seconds.
Until next time, Tuckahoe, have a very good evening.